Do you need to order a roll call, please?
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
You called me? Did you call me?
Sorry, President Byrne.
I'm here. All right, please, we have a court present, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now. Okay, all right, folks, is there anybody who wants to address the board tonight on any topic other than what's on, you know, committee at the whole? If you're here for your end of committee at the whole, obviously, we're going to talk, all right? Yes?
Take two seconds. Matt Jacobs, 204 Abilene, and obviously Hawthorne. This week, we just wanted to extend a thanks to the community as well as the trustees and you guys for helping us out and supporting. Obviously, trustee Schultz was out yesterday in the cold helping, and as were you, Roger, and I know Tom was getting signs out, and you were at meetings and...
And he was the cameraman.
And he was the cameraman, so we just wanted to do a quick thank you for everything you guys did for us.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
Well, let me finish. For, well, if anybody wants to donate to the families and friends of Hawthorne District 73, I'm sure they'll still accept a donation. You guys got...
It's out of my realm, I can't, but yeah.
Well, that's mine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, and then, if it's okay with the board, I'd like you to bring in, you know, your hardcore committee people, and we'll recognize everybody at a board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because this was good yesterday.
Okay, yes, thank you.
You know, so, congratulations on your efforts, it's good for the whole town.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. And my granddaughter thanks you, of course.
Can I ask him a question?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Matt, Matt.
Matt, Matt.
The doctor's got a question.
So, since the second part didn't pass, can you, are you at liberty to talk about it?
I will, I have no idea, we have to get together this board and talk about it, which will probably start...
You want Tom and I to explain it, or?
No.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but it's not to the effect... Okay, all right, I'll be quiet, I'll be quiet.
Those discussions will start probably on the next Monday, when our...
Then the building will start, what, about...
That, I don't know either, but that is all pretty much ready for shovels, so we can get going, so. All right?
All right, well, good job.
Well done.
All right. Okay, might as well start, huh?
Uh, no, we have...
Oh, yeah, come on. If this is, yeah, this is an end committee at the whole, I don't think, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay, and you, who are you, sir?
I'm Mark Ayres, I'm the Illinois Director for the Humane Society of the United States. I'll be pretty quick and just very brief. Just want to thank the village chair trustees for taking some action, kind of informal action, several months ago, became aware that the pet store lobby came here and was interested in putting in a pet store, I think it was a pet land that wanted to come here, and I wasn't aware of that, but I got wind of it, and I watched the video, and I was very impressed, extremely impressed, at the village council here, trustees and how you researched that issue so in-depth. I was very, very impressed with that, that you actually researched that issue before you even came to this meeting, and you presented some questions that I thought were very good, and that they, in fact, had some difficulty answering. You know, there were many things that were said during that presentation, I won't go into all the major points there, but there was one thing in particular that really troubled me, and that's about campylobacter. This is a campylobacter outbreak that existed from this pet land store, this pet land chain. The owner was here, the veterinarian was here, and the lobbyist was here, and they kind of just threw caution to the wind and said, "Yeah, campylobacter, it's not really a big deal, you can go to Walmart and have worse campylobacter outbreak than it can at our stores." And they just kind of pivoted, and they did, they denied blame. The CDC put out a national advisory on this thing, 113 people were infected by this, in seven great states, so this is a very big deal that should be addressed, and I'm glad that the village here took note of that, I think it was trustee Takaoka, or perhaps it was trustee Oppenheim, but when asked about campylobacter, they just didn't really have an answer, and I thought that was surprising. Just lastly, this issue for these pet store ordinances that we like to push are really catching wind. Right now, there's 280 local ordinances throughout the country, two states, California and Maryland, Pennsylvania's on deck to pass it pretty quick here, Illinois, we've got tons of cities and villages, counties, Chicago, Cook County, Kankakee, Warrensville, Waukegan, Crest Hill, several on deck to pass that humane pet store ordinance, so we're just gladly encourage Vernon Hills to look at that and potentially pass a humane pet store ordinance so that you don't have to ever deal with this issue ever again, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Anybody else want to speak from the audience on anything, other than what's on committee at the whole?
Appreciate it, I just want to take a few moments. I'm, I represent the Illinois Pet Lovers Association, and I...
Your name is?
I'm Lane Born, and I'm in a pet shop in Chicago.
Your address, for the record.
I actually live in Glencoe, and my shop is Lincoln Park. I actually just took my kids to Chuck E. Cheese a couple of weeks ago for their birthday in Vernon Hills, and I have to say, it's a beautiful community here, you've done a great job, and I grew up in Northbrook, so I'm very familiar with Vernon Hills. I just want to take a few moments. One, I'd never had, I've owned a shop for 13 years, I've never had that cab, I can't even pronounce it, we've never had it in our store. It's a very rare instance, and it's just, to pass an ordinance based on that is really kind of silly, but I want you to know that the issues that HSUS is trying to address, was addressed on the state level. The Safe Pets Bill was passed, it was an agreed bill, and it was signed in by the governor last year, so this was addressed on the state level, and it basically is a sourcing bill, so no pet shop in Illinois can actually purchase a dog from a breeder who has had a violation within the last two years, uh, two violations within the last three years. So, it's a good bill, it also requires microchipping, so that addresses overpopulation, because what you will find is pet shop dogs are not found in shelters. We, they are now microchipped, so if they, if the activists come to you and say, "Oh, you know, pet shop dogs are the cause of overpopulation, they're found in shelters," ask for the microchips, they're not there. I also want to tell you that the ordinance that HSUS would like you to pass was passed in Chicago four years ago, and at the time, there were 16 independent pet shops that were operating in Chicago. Today, there are three family pet shops that remain. It's been, you know, a difficult time for myself personally, because I own one of these shops, and we prevailed by becoming a retail rescue operation. We pass all city and state inspections in the last four years, and we comply with the Safe Pets Bill and the Lemon Law, even though retail rescues are specifically exempted under the Chicago, under the Chicago Rescue Law. In fact, our guarantee is above the standards of state law. The three remaining family-run pet shops have come in under scrutiny by the activist community because we source our dogs from rescues that work with breeders. A common misconception is that real rescues don't source or buy from breeders. In fact, a Washington Post investigation, which I believe was sent to you in an email, showed close to 100 rescues buying puppies and adult dogs from breeders directly and reselling them as rescues to the Chicagoland consumers. Our own investigation in Chicago showed hundreds of Chicago retail rescues buying directly from out-of-state breeders, importing thousands of puppies, and reselling them to Chicago residents as rescues, in some cases underage illegal imports. We have documentation which shows that Paws even imported six-week-old purebred dogs out of state. Our rescue does not source from puppy mills, but from breeders that have no serious violations within the last two years in accordance with the Safe Pets Bill. We do not operate under a loophole, we operate as hundreds of retail rescues operate throughout the country, except we do not source from puppy mills, unlike the retail rescues which buy from puppy mills and gladly advertise the fact, which allows these substandard breeders to flourish. That is a rescue industry, it's an unregulated monster buying directly from mainly uninspected breeders and importing thousands of dogs into Chicago and the Chicagoland area. We recently met with the Chicago mayor's office, Chicago Animal Care and Control, which runs the largest true shelter in Chicago, they don't import dogs, and they were in attendance as long, as well as various aldermen, even HSUS, the gentleman behind me was there, and the Puppy Mill Project was in attendance. We showed various documents verifying our claims. The current director of the Chicago Animal Care and Control admitted that none of our dogs were found in the shelter. It has been shown that Chicago retail rescues even cherry-picked a few good, adoptable dogs and leave the rest. Ultimately, the rescue ordinance has been seen as a failure because Chicago has not reduced the shelter population due to the rescue ordinance passed four years ago, and this was one of the main reasons behind passing the rescue ordinance to begin with. The mayor's office realizes at that moment that they traded a regulated industry for an unregulated one. In fact, Paws, the largest retail rescue operation in Chicago, imports 1,800 puppies, mostly puppies, from out-of-state to Chicago annually, and Paws used to take 70% of Chicago Animal Care and Control dogs from the Chicago shelter, Chicago Animal Care and Control, prior to the rescue ordinance being passed, now it's only 20%. But the terrible overcrowding is still persists at Chicago Animal Care and Control, even though 16, only three stores of the 16 remain. HSUS has even been shown to import dogs from South Korea to Chicago, which Steve Dale, another gentleman sitting behind me, an animal activist report, stated that the cause of the dog, this was the cause of the dog flu in Chicago, and I can send you the Facebook post to that effect. After all the evidence was shown, one alderman at our meeting even said, "No further action would be taken to put the three remaining family-run pet shops out of business," and I quote, "A pet sales ban is off the table." We also informed the mayor's office that HSUS has never raided, inspected, or even talked to a USDA-inspected breeder. The horror stories that you hear about and see on TV are not inspected USDA breeder dogs, but the uninspected backyard breeder dogs that have exploded in number, and as a result, the very same, as a result of the very same rescue ordinances HSUS wants you to consider. You might hear the keyboard activists say that the USDA is not capable of inspecting USDA breeders. In fact, 2/3 of USDA inspectors are licensed veterinarians. These USDA inspectors inspect breeders that sell the pet shops. They're certainly qualified to inspect, and they certainly know the proper care for their dogs. You might also hear the USDA does not have enough inspectors to inspect and not enough staff. Not true. Call the USDA, and they will tell you that they have plenty of staff for inspecting. The ratio is actually quite low. One USDA inspector inspects about 23 USDA breeders per year. You might hear a false argument by the keyboard activists that we sell sick dogs, like that bacteria that you heard. That's not true. We have a guarantee that covers up to one year. Less than half of 1% of my dogs, of percent of our customers, asks to redeem our guarantee. The ones that do get a full refund, which goes beyond current state law, unlike the retail rescue industry, which are not required to offer any guarantees. This is why the Chicago Veterinaries Association are against these bills, and why the Illinois Veterinary Association are against these type of bills. This pretty much represents all the vets in Illinois. In fact, the reality is, breeders that sell to pet shops are incentivized not to sell sick dogs, for the very reason they must guarantee those dogs they sell to pet shops. If a breeder has a dog that breeds puppies that has genetic issues, they will have to, they will be notified by the pet shop, and they will not breed that dog again. However, if these rescue ordinances continue to be passed, more backyard breeders and online breeders who are not inspected, and for the most part, don't offer guarantees, will sell more dogs online. Since these dogs are not guaranteed, many of these backyard breeders will continue to breed defective dogs and sell them to online consumers, which is as easy as filling up your online shopping cart and hitting the buy button. You might also hear that dogs from our breeders are overbred. Most female dogs can only breed four or five times, after that, they don't produce or produce very small litters, and most breeders won't produce and won't breed dogs after a certain age. My retail rescue operations gets many of these older dogs, and I'm happy to say I like placing them in homes, I'm happy to do it. However, states and federal government are now passing laws to standardize breeding operations. The standards include the amount of dogs, amount of times a dog can be bred, the size of the kennels, et cetera. In fact, in Ohio, the Puppy Protection Act was introduced to reform the AWA and regulate breeders, and the, Ohio passed a law, and Chicago is studying it on the federal level to standardize breeding practices. These rescue ordinances are just not needed with, anymore with upcoming federal legislation. In fact, Las Vegas just repealed their rescue ordinance, and every city in Cook County that has a pet shop, Arlington Heights, Hoffman Estates, Chicago Ridge, have opted out of the county rescue ordinance, which was passed, which HSUS wants you to consider. I would ask you to please consider these facts and reject any type of ordinance in the future. Certainly happy to answer any questions for you. No, it's a little longer than what you anticipated, and I appreciate your time.
No, that's okay.
What's, what's the name of your pet store?
Pocket Puppies. We, we've been in business for 13 years. We actually sold dogs, if you go to our website, you can see Steven Tyler brought a couple of dogs from Aerosmith on our, from us, and, you know, we've...
How about Parrish Hill?
Uh, not yet, no, but we do have, I want you to say, to let you know, we have a A+ Better Business Bureau rating. We received a complaint-free award from the Better Business Bureau for four years, and in our type of business, that's pretty good. We're dealing with live animals, it's very difficult, they catch colds, they have coughs, but we take care of our customers. We're also, we guarantee our dogs under the Lemon Law, and again, by passing these type of laws, rescues are not going to be under, they don't have to guarantee their dogs. You know, they don't, they don't have to, they can buy dogs from anywhere. You'll perpetuate substandard breeding because they're going to substandard breeders. You know, Illinois law requires us to buy our dogs from good breeders. We cannot buy from puppy mills, but these rescue ordinances actually have the opposite effect, because rescues can go and buy their dogs anywhere, bring them back to your city, and sell them as rescues, and they're buying directly from rescues, I'm sorry, from breeders. Chicago French Bulldog Rescue regularly goes to auctions, and they go to auctions, you know, breeder auctions, and they buy from anyone, and they, they're buying from breeders, and they bring them back, and they advertise that they've rescued these puppies and dogs, and resell them for thousands of dollars. We have documentation to this effect. Read the Washington Post article that we sent you, and you'll see. It, it's really, the mayor, Chicago mayor's office realized that what mistake was made, and they understand the current situation, and they're actually now even considering going through and adopting a sourcing standard. So, I, I'm not going to take up any more of your time, and I appreciate it. If you have any questions, let me know.
This issue isn't on our agenda tonight, so...
What was that?
The issue's not on the committee at the whole.
I know, and, and I just wanted to address it, and I'm not a public speaker, but I do appreciate your time and taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a lot to respond to.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, my name is Steve Dale. I host a radio show about pets on WGN Radio for 22 years now. I write books about pets, I go to veterinary conferences, I speak around the world about companion animals. The Puppy Mill Project asked me to come today, and I have been very involved in this issue. I've testified...
Sir?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a second, before you get into this, I just wanted to, you know, the mayor let you know that there's nothing on the agenda this evening? You're certainly welcome under public comment to come in and make the point you want, but you mentioned that's a lot to respond to, there's no need to respond, this is in the debate, there's nothing here. If at some point in the future, there's a proposal that comes forward, either in the form of an ordinance or a development proposal, then at that time, there would be a public hearing and an opportunity to fully vet the issue. So, there's, there's no need to do a, you know, Shane Alexander count, or point, counterpoint, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
But misinformation is not a good thing, so since I'm here, we do have a Lemon Law, and I was a part of supporting that Lemon Law, actually, now, many years ago. You get a car, and you're unhappy with the car, a washing machine, and it's not working the right way, maybe it's spitting the laundry right back out in your face, and you want to take it back, and the Lemon Law provides an opportunity to do that. Dogs, cats, they're members of the family, and maybe the return rate, I have no idea what it really is at this one particular pet store or not, but pet stores report they don't get a lot of it, we fall in love with those companion animals that we purchase. So, there is an opportunity to pursue the Lemon Law, but I like better that those animals are not purchased at pet stores in the first place. I'm about to, over Thanksgiving, actually, it's a week before Thanksgiving, they actually taped the show that airs on Thanksgiving, it's the National Dog Show presented by Purina, I'm part of the broadcast team. I know breeders, I know hundreds and hundreds of breeders, over the years, I've spoken to at least that many breeders, I don't know a one, I've not met a one, dog or cat, that has ever, ever, ever sold or would consider selling to a pet store, because a responsible breeder wants to know who is purchasing their beloved animal, and they have a contract that they sign, and usually for pet owners, it's mandated, spay, neuter, it is also that if for any reason you have to return the animal, it comes back to me, but they also want to make sure the family is right for whatever breed they happen to be breeding.
Is it usually a mature dog?
I'm sorry?
Is it a mature dog?
Sometimes they're selling puppies, and sometimes they're actually selling adult dogs, but mostly the breeders are selling puppies, but what they will do is say, "All right, this dog we've bred a couple times, and now we want to sell this dog as a pet," or "We thought this dog could be or should be a show dog, but it's not worked out very well for that dog, doesn't like being shown," perhaps.
It could be a more mature dog.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is there a percentage of puppies versus the dogs that have been on the planet a couple of years?
Well, breeders mostly sell puppies, but they sell adult dogs, too.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I don't know that there's a percent that I could give you. You know, but they sell, but they, they sell them both. The point I'm making, though, is that they don't sell ever, ever, to third parties, which include pet stores. They sell directly to the person who's going to purchase that dog, so...
Well, isn't they in a third party?
Hmm?
They're a third party, right?
Well, if I call...
Buy the dog, buy it to third party?
I'm sorry?
No, you're the second.
Second?
You're the second. If you buy from the breeder.
If I buy the dog...
Okay, okay. Well, okay, so if I go direct, I'm okay?
Yeah, but, but if you say...
As long as you know who the breeder is.
Yeah, but if you, or the breeder knows you, and that's the point.
And that's all AKA-type stuff?
AKC, American Kennel Club. Sometimes there's other registrations, but American Kennel Club is the largest for...
It actually gives, you know, gives you like the pedigree on the dog?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. English Pointer, Beagle, German Shorthaired Pointer, whatever the breed happens to be. Also, rescues were mentioned, rescues, I wish they didn't have to exist, I wish we didn't have dogs and cats that need rescuing, but we do for a variety of reasons. People mostly give up their animals, it's the most common, actually, cause of death in companion animals, isn't kidney disease or heart disease or cancers, it's actually behavior, and people give up the dogs for that reason, it's a behavior problem, that they just can't figure out a way to fix, it doesn't match their household. But animals are also given up for all sorts of reasons. I moved, and I'm just giving up my dog, I couldn't conceive of doing that, people do that every single day. Someone in the family, someone passes away, and someone, no one wants the dog in that particular family, that happens every single day. No fault of the dogs or cats, any of these, we want to find homes for those animals, I'm not sure that's a bad thing. If those animals happen to come from out-of-state, I'm not sure that's a bad thing either, I don't know how that is bad. I am very familiar with H3N2, the canine influenza virus, that indeed came from South Korea, we think. The truth is, and it's the truth, truly, I've been very involved in this, I've presented on the dog flu at two veterinary conferences, what was then called the North American Veterinary Conference, now called VMX, and the Western Veterinary Conference, that's held in Las Vegas, and we don't know exactly for sure how that flu got here. We think it came, we think, from South Korea, maybe from a rescue group, it could have come from a military dog, we don't know. And that flu actually lives on fomites, so that virus can live on a pant leg, it could live on anything and then be introduced that way. We just don't know, it's a guess as to how that flu came here. Exactly, we do know the flu, that virus, H3N2, in dogs, originated in Southeast Asia, that much we know. But dogs, whether they're saved from Tennessee, they're saved from Indiana, or they're saved from Cook County, I want them to be saved. Kelly Gandersky at...
Steve, can I give you...
Yeah.
I'll give you two minutes.
Okay.
According to the computer, it's 7:39, because then we've got people here that are on the agenda, you know?
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, and you could come back, I mean, we're not doing anything today.
I appreciate the time, and I will...
I mean, I like, I don't mind hearing from you guys, it's kind of pretty interesting.
No, I will...
Are you on TV this weekend?
Sometimes I am on TV.
On this thing for Thanksgiving or something?
I will be in social media, I'll be doing the, a lot of the...
But not on a channel?
No, that's a...
Don't explain to me, I only go to TV.
That's on Channel 5, after the Macy Thanksgiving Day Parade, and I'm glad to give them a plug.
Okay.
That's the National Dog Show.
All right, you got the floor for two minutes, now I'm talking over you.
Okay, no problem.
7:42.
It was mentioned that the two veterinary organizations, the State of Illinois and Chicago Veterinary Medical Association, yes, they are opposed, and their members were so upset about it that a veterinarian, a veterinary technician, in fact, the National Technician Organization got involved, and another veterinarian, and then myself, began Veterinary Professionals Against Puppy Mills. Sometimes your organization that represents you doesn't do exactly what you hope, and there were so many members that they lost membership, that is just the truth. Dogs that are rescue dogs, truly rescue dogs, are not at pet stores, dogs that are truly rescue dogs don't sell for $1,200 or whatever those dogs sell for. Dogs at pet stores, we know, are somewhat likely to have medical problems based on sometimes their size, very small dogs, like teacup dogs, they may have behavior problems as well. I'll stop here, but I'm happy to come back, I am here, though, because this issue is important.
Sure.
And now, hundreds of cities across the country have said, "No dogs or cats, in some cases rabbits, sold at pet stores," and it is spreading, it's spreading for, in my opinion, a very good reason. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, if this comes back, you know, on the committee at the whole for a full-blown discussion, we will keep you folks advised, plus, this is going to be on YouTube, when, Mike, day or two?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Probably, probably.
I'll be on YouTube.
Yeah, yeah.
How exciting!
No, but if you want a record of what we all said tonight, it's transparent.
And you could get an invoice on Union. No, no.
Okay, all right.
I, I do appreciate the time, and Mayor, clearly, you and the trustees echoing what Mark Ayres from the HSUS said, care about this issue a great deal, I'm grateful for that, you've done your homework on this issue, I'm grateful for that as well. Probably, most of you statistically have a pet, there are actually more pets than there are kids in America at this point.
Wonderful.
Yeah, so, what, what was that?
I kind of like the kids personally, but it's, I'm a grandfather, you know?
Okay, well, a lot of people here may have grand dogs or grand cats, and, and we do care about them as family members, and it is important as to what we get.
What's your show on WGN, that's it?
So, my show is...
Are you on there in the day, every day, or...
I'm on tomorrow, I can mention this, so I'll be on tomorrow with Bill and Wendy at... So, I'll be on tomorrow with Bill and Wendy at 11:05, I believe, as a guest on their show. And my show is 6:30 in the morning on Sundays.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
That's okay.
All right, all right, thank you very much on both sides of this issue, and, like, I'm sorry, oh, Trustee Brown.
I wanted to see if it's something, the ordinance, that we could put in the agenda for future meetings.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, sure we can, I mean, then we've got to have the full-blown discussion, yeah.
Do we want to?
Well, we're not doing it tonight, we could bring it up maybe, what, after, what, we got one more meeting this month?
Uh, yeah, we only have-
Actually, actually, Mayor, I think what's being contemplated is something in the vein of a text amendment, and so, if it's going to go that route, it would have to go to planning and zoning first, and then come back here. So, the appropriate thing at this point is probably just to ask staff to investigate, work with these folks offline, get the input, and then, then we can set it up through that zoning process, so that everybody gets the appropriate notices.
And are you, the gentleman that's, you know, not, not, is opposing, are you, are you going to give us your info, contact info?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, you know, staff will talk to you, both of you, both sides of the issue, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, Trustee Oppenheimer.
Actually, that's, that's what I was going to suggest as well, so thank you.
Yeah, well, then, so, but we got to do, probably won't be till after the first of the year, probably. I don't know.
Correct.
Yeah, the staff can work with the village attorney on preparing the necessary requirements and-
There's notice requirements for a hearing and so forth, so.
These guys sooner than that, obviously, but, okay.
Thank you.
What else, anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Not quite.
Okay. All right, Joe Carey, comprehensive land use.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'll, I'll keep this brief. In 2009, Melanophyne Associates prepared a retail market study and store strategy analysis for the village. Shortly thereafter, in 2012, we created our comprehensive land use plan. What we're going to be having before you, likely on November 20th, for your consideration, is approval of a contract with Melanophyne Associates to conduct a new retail market study and store strategy analysis for the village. Specifically, we want to take a look at vacant properties, whether it's the Darling property adjacent to Lifetime, which is approximately 60 acres adjacent to the Corporate Woods area, as well as the, the mall, which is obviously undergoing significant redevelopment. What they'll do is they'll do drive-time analysis, they'll review trends in the market, and they'll look at what tenants are currently exploring the area, they're interested in coming to the village that meets their criteria. We were very successful in attracting Mariano's because of the study that Melanophyne did in the past, and also provides a good framework for how we've moved forward in past developments. And so, this will be appearing before you again on the 20th for-
What's the cost on this one?
It would be not to exceed $30,000. And we do have money budgeted for this as part of our budget deliberations from this past year.
Okay. Is everybody kind of clear on that one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've done this before.
And I know who does.
Okay, and, all right, and what else you got there, Joe?
Yeah, so, on Saturday, November 24th, at 4:30, at the Vernon Hills Golf Course, otherwise known as the Muni, located 291 Evergreen Drive, we'll have our annual Holiday Tree and Menorah lighting ceremony. Mayor Berner will be flipping the switch on the Holiday Tree and Menorah.
And the Queens.
And the Queens, absolutely. So, we invite friends, family, neighbors, and kids for hot chocolate, cookies, and cider, with the assistance of Countryside Fire Protection District. Santa has cleared his schedule, so he will be there, and so, we invite everyone to enjoy the start of the holiday season.
Okay. That is, it's, it's Saturday, right?
Yeah, Saturday at-
It's only been Saturday for, what, about 30 years? No, I, yeah, I'll be there, you know, my granddaughter will be there. They'll make me. Okay, next is Finance Director, Treasurer, Nathan, what's your last name, Nathan?
Gaskill.
Gat?
Gaskill, G-A-S-K.
Yeah, I was going to call you Lauterbach, you know?
Do.
That's who you work for, not Nathan Lauterbach. Okay, go ahead.
Tonight, we have on the omnibus agenda, two ordinances, one for workers' comp and one for the commercial package premium. We're happy to report that there's a, between the two, a 6% decrease in the premium costs for our-
6% of what?
Uh-
It was over $600 last year.
Over $600?
I'm just asking you, I mean, you know?
The total between the two last year was five, over 500.
Close to 60.
6%.
Well, 6% of reduction?
Correct.
Okay, so what, what, how much, how many dollars is that?
$36,000 savings.
Okay. All right, well, that's better than a stick in the egg, yes, you know?
So, most of it's the workers' comp, we had our rates go down, as well as total payroll costs, so.
Well, payroll went down.
Yeah. That's, that's half of it.
Because this isn't really rated through the NCC.
Yeah, our net payroll went from 2.9 to 2.7, the, the rate per $100, so that was-
But we, we don't have a mad rating.
Pardon?
A mad, experience mad?
This is my content.
I don't even know, I don't know what you're referring to. You're the insurance.
Well, you know, apparently, I didn't sit in on this meeting, so, and you didn't call me, so, you can call me anytime, I mean, you're, you're telling me 6% across the board, all right, fine. But it could have went down just because the payrolls went down.
That is, that's about half of it.
Okay. All right, so, all right.
3%.
So, the final, final number is what?
Between the two lines is $540,000.
Okay.
And last year was 576.
Okay. All right.
And they're on the omnibus agenda, letters F and G.
Yeah, okay. All right, has anybody got any other questions?
No, sir.
Anybody on this? Somebody had a question on this? No? Oh, okay. All right, that'll be approved shortly. All right, Nathan, thanks. Next is, uh, the ordinance regarding property disposal. This must be the chief.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in the omnibus packet tonight, there's two ordinances, actually, 2018-147 and 2018-148, and what we're seeking to do here is just provide a little more efficient manner for the police department to dispose of property. We take in a lot of property through our functions, whether they be found property, whether it be contraband, whether it be, you know, evidence that can't be returned, we can't find an owner, maybe it was stolen property, and, and we've recovered in a crime, we can't secure the owner. By law, we become the owner of this property, and we have two large rooms that fill up quite quickly, and so, it's a real effort on our part to regularly dispose of property. So, these ordinance allow us to do so in such a manner consistent with the law, and report back to the board as part of our regular monthly report, the property that has been disposed of, and then on an annual basis, also provide a financial accounting of that. And, and that's versus having to create a new ordinance every time we want to dispose of property. So, we're asking for a new system, and then basically, one ordinance a year, allowing us to routinely dispose of property, and then we'll report it in a public fashion back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys can't just have a garage sale, right? Yeah, yeah.
That, that is correct.
Yeah, and, and we can't buy anything. We can't.
No, none, none, no one with any connection of the village.
Or any other employee.
No.
I just wanted to clarify.
It's a good point, yes. Employees and village officials do not have any first right to buy this, they don't buy it at all.
Right.
It's either given to charity, or it's turned over to more of a public auction system, and disposed of that way.
Probably get rid of bikes that way, right?
Correct, we, we, we do, we turn over bikes to charity, and, and they, they can sell them and raise money for their charitable cause.
Yeah, sure, okay. All right, who else you got, Public Works Director Brown, land swap agreement with the Park District.
Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to alert the board that Ordinance 2018-152 is on the consent agenda. This is a land exchange between the Park District and the, the village. As you are aware, the Park District built a new maintenance facility on Indian Wood, 1400 Indian Wood, and that was built on village land. The Park District no longer had a need for their maintenance facility at Seven Philip Road, so we are currently leasing that from the Park District. And so, what the agreement that is in front of you, and was drawn up with the help of Attorney Hunt, is to exchange properties. We're currently using it. The one holdup was, we need a no future remediation letter from the EPA.
Park District?
We've been, the Park District has been waiting for that for a few years, they still need to go in and remove a little bit of contamination. Basically, they had a couple fuel tanks, so, they've had the EPA out year after year, they've dug, and then they have monitoring wells, and then they've said, well, you need to dig a little bit more. And the next year, they get a report, they need to dig a little bit more. So, what was crafted by the two different attorneys is, they are holding the village, the village is not responsible for the remediation, that and associated costs is built into the Park District, and they are the responsible party. So, with the crafting of this agreement, it allows for this land swap, it allows for the Public Works Department to maintain that facility. You may recall, for two years, we had a blue tarp over the roof, because we didn't want to invest money. We think it's prudent for us to own it, to maintain it, and to move forward, that's why we recommend approval of Ordinance 2018-152.
Okay.
On the consent agenda.
Yeah, and the, what's the gallon capacity of the tanks?
Oh, they were, no longer.
They've removed them, so I don't recall what was originally there a few years back, probably a 5,000 gallon tank.
Oh, okay.
They did have two of them, one, I think, was gas, and one was diesel.
And one of the primary uses of that facility, right, is to store the Christmas or holiday decorations that we put up throughout the town. And we need to keep those in good working order, so we don't need to replace them on an annual basis, we can get many, many years on them, so that, that facility works out well for us.
Thank you.
It's a nice facility.
Yeah, okay. All right.
It's worth it.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items A through?
Okay, I think it is, A through K.
J or K?
K. K, you want it pulled, right? But, but we have something pulled.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve items A through J, omitting K.
Correct.
Okay. All right, it's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? If not, roll call. If not, roll call.
Sorry.
Oh.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Abstain.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Okay, do I need to vote on this one? No, motion carries, we've got four.
Yep, we've got four.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, any new business to come before us?
Or unfinished?
Well, just the announcement of K, we're not going to address K.
We got it approved.
We have, uh-
K is Menard's performance guarantee, and there's still some open issues.
Well, this is what, the $750 one you and I talked about? What was it, for your case?
Yes, sir, as far as an update, there, it was brought to my attention after the packet was prepared, that there was non-payment from a contractor, subcontractor for Menard's. They damaged the HOA's irrigation system, they agreed to send them a check for about $750, it was never received, so the-
Subcontractor or Menard's?
Uh, it was Menard's subcontractor that was performing the work, there was a side-
Okay, so the check's supposed to come from him, or her?
Uh, it was to come from JA Johnson, the general contractor agreed to pay for it. I've had conversations yesterday with Menard's and with JA Johnson, they have said that they are overnighting the check, so, until the check is received, we're not going to move forward with this, we will bring it back to you at the appropriate time.
JA Johnson, okay.
JA Johnson.
It's JA Johnson.
And the check's in the mail.
Yeah, okay, so, all right, so you might get it tomorrow. There's an incentive here.
There is, there is.
Okay, all right, so this one's pulled. All right, any unfinished business? Approval of the village board meeting minutes of October 17th, 2018?
A motion to approve, second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Schultz?
Abstain.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries. Since I shuffled the papers here, oh, okay, approval and passage of Ordinance 2018-145, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Village of Vernon Hills, Chapter 10, Tobacco Sales, and Chapter 26, Smoke-Free Air Regulations. Mike Atkinson, are you taking this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The board, as the board recalls, this was discussed at the October 17th meeting, there's really two parts to what the board considered. The first one relates to smoking in public places, that would be an amendment to Section 26 of the code. The board was unanimous in directing staff to prepare an ordinance that would prohibit smoking in an outdoor dining area, and within 25 feet of the outdoor dining area, and then also to increase the setback from a public entrance to, from 15 feet to 25 feet. And then finally, to include vaping or e-cigarettes to be regulated, just as cigarettes would be regulated in public areas. Again, staff was directed on a unanimous vote to prepare that ordinance, and that ordinance is attached to the packet tonight. The second part relates to Section 10 of the village's Code of Ordinances, and then has to do with retail sales. Currently, you have to be 21 to purchase cigarettes in Vernon Hills, so that would remain the same. There could also, there was also an amendment that the, the village board had an agreement on, whereby we would raise the age to sell cigarettes from 18 to 21. And then the third part is where the village board did not have, come to a consensus and direct staff, and that has to do with the age to possess cigarettes. The current regulations state that you have to be at least 18 to possess cigarettes. Some board members felt 21 is appropriate, other board members felt it should stay at 18, because, you know, theoretically, you could legally purchase cigarettes in a neighboring community, and unknowingly come into the Village of Vernon Hills in violation of the into the Village of Vernon Hills in violation of the regulation, and it's, it would really be difficult to communicate what this regulation is specific only to Vernon Hills and be able to fairly enforce that kind of regulation. So that was the struggle. Ultimately, the Board didn't come to a consensus on that. That's why it's unfinished business. If the Board felt that the minimum age to possess cigarettes should remain at eighteen, then it would be recommended to make a motion approving ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-five. If the Board felt that raising the minimum age to possess cigarettes to twenty-one is appropriate, then ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-six, the second item, item C, you see on your agenda, would be recommended. And again, that's what we were down to, the minimum age to possess, eighteen or twenty-one, and I'll leave it to the Board to discuss.
So both ordinances mandate the twenty-five foot setback and also mandate no smoking in a seating area where food is being served.
That's correct, and within twenty-five feet of that. Both ordinances regulate vape, whether it's retail sale or vaping in public places, just like a cigarette would be as well. The only difference between the two ordinances is one forty-five would keep possession at eighteen, one forty-six would raise it to twenty-one.
And just for clarification, when Commissioner Atkinson was talking about cigarettes a moment ago, that, really, that's just shorthand for all-inclusive, for any tobacco, alternative tobacco, e-cigarettes, vaping, what have you.
True. What do you think, Trustee Brown?
Well, I was in agreeance that issue was up to twenty-one.
Even for true?
You asked me. But Alex is thirty-nine. He's safe. No, I, I think so. Not my case.
Don't, don't, don't get too medical, I know.
I will get too medical. I'm just waiting for my turn. Oh, I'll tell him.
Trust me.
Alex, you're not safe.
Fifteen years of me telling him still, but we'll see.
Okay, that wasn't a nice question. Okay, Trustee Cook?
Attorney Hunt, was that your suggestion, or was that staff's suggestion? I mean, on the potential compromise that until such time as the state moves possession to twenty-one, which I think with the number, you know, that it's a possibility, that we compromise on this and, and make possession eighteen, but use twenty-one, therefore, we could start to get at what we were doing and wait until the state brings the level up to twenty-one?
Logically, it's an alternative, and it was proposed that way as, it was a topic that came up in discussion here at the Village Hall earlier this week. I understand that contemporaneously, Trustee Oppenheim had a similar thought along those lines. So, I mean, logically, it's, it's a middle ground.
Well, I like that compromise because it, it takes away the problem we talked about with enforcement.
Doesn't, it doesn't entirely take the, the problem, if you consider that a problem, away, but, but I think it, it's somewhat of a middle ground. I'm, I'm with Trustee Brown in that I would like to, to raise it to twenty-one altogether. I appreciate the Chief Crease's concerns, but I think that we should be as proactive as possible about this.
Where would the fines be heard? Would that be here, like parking tickets?
Well, yeah, it would be, it would go-
Once we do the, once we do the adjudication-
So, yeah, it would, it would fall within the administrative adjudication ordinance. Of course, the recipient of the ticket also has the option of converting that to go to court. Not that that would be a-
Smart thing.
Smart move, but under the administrative adjudication ordinance, they have an option, you can't mandate them to go to this, so.
So.
Okay, but what's, what's the fine?
Well, that, that's yet to be set on the administrative adjudication ordinance.
So that's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda now. It'll be on the agenda, I believe, on the seventeenth?
You want to talk, Chief?
He's dying. Chief wants to say something.
Sure. The, how it's enforced, whether it is a citation written under the administrative adjudication, once that gets updated, or whether it's a citation written to Circuit Court, would determine how much, how much a fine is. So we have not yet proposed to the Board what those fines would be for any violations in administrative adjudication. So it, it just isn't proposed here what the fine would be.
So, can I ask, are there different classes, potentially different classes of fines? So that's violation of the smoking ordinance would be this amount, and violation of a traffic thing would be this amount?
Right. So right now, what we have are, some ordinances have a fine, a fine violation set to it, a parking violation has a fine set to it. Many other ordinances don't have a set fine, and it's established at court. Just to, you know, forecast a little bit what's coming before the Board soon on the administrative adjudication system is a process that will define a lot more fine amounts, and essentially, what we're proposing is bans, about five different bans of fines, and putting different village violations in, in the different fine amounts. So that'll be coming before you shortly with many of the village code violations.
Are you throwing in there, I mean, obviously, alcohol, right?
Of, of course. Everything.
Okay, and-
From building code violations to curfew issues, to any of the non-moving traffic violations under the vehicle code-
Everything that falls under adjudication.
Yeah.
Can I ask, Chief, what do you see as the problem with giving officers discretion as to when to assess fines for something like a smoking possession?
Well, thank you so much for the question. And let me be clear, I don't think there's a problem with officer discretion or officers being able to use discretion. And if we could just take a step back, it might be helpful for folks that are watching us or watch us later, to remind them, last summer, the Village was joining a number of other communities and taking a position of banning the sale, prohibiting the sale and distribution of tobacco products to people under the age of twenty-one. Since passing that in July of two thousand and seventeen, we have done a few things, and I'm just showing these. These are our crime prevention function. Our officer has visited every licensed tobacco retailer and, through education, informed all of them of the violation and, I'm sorry, of the ordinance, educated them about how to be compliant with it, provided signs to them so they can do that. And then on three separate occasions since July of two thousand and seventeen, we've had officers go to each and every one of those retailers and conduct compliance checks using underage persons to try and attempt to buy tobacco, and we found all of our retailers have been in compliance. We haven't found any violation. And the reason I share that with you is because when you pass an ordinance, we will enforce it. We will, you know, use that ordinance as guidance to go out there, and it doesn't mean that everyone always gets a, a ticket. Officers do have discretion. What I shared with the Board at that time, I'd like to just remind the Board of some of those concerns, and I think they fall into four basic categories. For laws to be effective, they have to be known by the members of public at large, and there's a real challenge in forming the public at large that visits our town and passes through our town of what a prohibited act would be when we're the only ones involved in regulating that. And this is a basic function of effective laws. I know, together, we want to be a welcoming community, and the Department works hard to build community trust with, with, with everyone, whether they be residents or visitors of our community. This prohibiting possession or use of tobacco by people under twenty-one has a potential of creating some real challenging enforcement encounters. I, I ask you to consider that in two thousand and eighteen, do we really want more reasons for police officers to have enforcement encounters with young people? Lastly, I would point out, we should differentiate a little bit between using our police powers to enforce public health issues versus public safety issues. And there are times when it's appropriate to enforce public health issues, particularly when those consequences might turn into a public safety issue for others. So we talk about underage drinking, impairment, all of those things matter, but I would, I would ask the Board to balance where it's appropriate to turn a public health issue into a police enforceable violation. And just, I, I think the ordinance that was passed is meeting its intended goals. It's, it's been effective at dissuading our retailers from selling and delivering tobacco to the persons under twenty-one with very little risk.
Okay, I'm gonna go down the Board and do a poll here. Who wants twenty-one, twenty? You want it? I'm asking you, do you want twenty-one, twenty-one or not?
Where do you want to start?
Well, the doctor here. I mean, because we gotta, I would kind of like to move on this.
Well, I'd kind of like to make sure that we, that we fully address the, the possibilities. Well, because, because, because one of the possibilities still is that we could say it's possession for twenty-one, and another possibility is that we can say it's use at twenty-one. And, and I, I think that, that is a somewhat reasonable compromise in that someone isn't going to purchase, legally purchase cigarettes in Mundaline, be driving through, get stopped for a, a traffic ticket in our jurisdiction, and then get fined for something that they just purchased. But, but at least if it's a use thing, then they would have to physically be using it, and, and then the police would have to be aware somehow that they were using it illegally, and-
Like as far as eyeballing them?
As far as eyeballing them, exactly. But also, if it's, if it's a group of people, say there's an eighteen-year-old and there's a sixteen-year-old, the sixteen-year-old is already in violation, but the eighteen-year-old is not.
If he's smoking.
If he's actually smoking it.
Yeah.
So, so, so I, I understand your, your concerns in that, and, and I understand the, the difference between using police powers for safety issues versus other, other things, but-
You know, okay. So what do you want to do?
So, so I, so, so from my chair, I, I would, would move that, that we prohibit the use under twenty-one years of age, not the possession.
So it'd be twenty-one, eighteen?
So it would be-
So if the kid's got it at him, but he's not using it, it's eighteen?
No. Twenty-one, eighteen to possess.
It's-
Use purchase twenty-one and eighteen to possess.
Yes.
Without using it.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Schultz?
Long before the good doctor was on the Board, long before Trustee Brown was on the Board, I was known as the governor of the nanny state, the smoking Nazi, because I'm the one that harassed his lordship, the, the good mayor here, to move forward with an ordinance to prohibit the indoor use of tobacco products. We did it prior to Lincolnshire, we did it a year and a half-
We did it pretty early.
Prior to the state doing it, and I was very proud of that. With that being said, I cannot support the criminalization, and that's kind of what I'm calling it, of anyone possessing or using tobacco products between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one. I know as a fact that should that occur, up on every bulletin board over Great Lakes, there's going to be a notice, stay away from Vernon Hills, young boots, because if you decide to smoke there, you're going to be subject to harassment. And I'm not saying our police harass, but it's just a general term that's going to be applied. So I understand, and I also appreciate, though, our strengthening our existing, existing ordinance in either one of these by expanding the distance to twenty-five feet, and also clarifying that smoking cannot occur in a area where food can be consumed, which is going to hurt our own private little business across the street here, because that is a food service area, and it is all pretty much within twenty-five feet of the doorway there, so that's going to make any of the customers there go down, out into the open field area of the, the golf course. So I-
Or to another spot, away.
Right. So with all that being said, though, I have no problem with the number, letter B, two thousand and eighteen, one forty-five, but I cannot support two thousand and eighteen, one forty-six.
So you're at twenty-one to buy, eighteen to use, or possess?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Trustee Cook?
Well, I was interested in potential compromise until listening to Chief, and, and I, I just think I have to side with Trustee Schultz on this one, in terms of enforcement, and that'd be at, yeah, twenty, twenty-one purchase.
Eighteen and eighteen.
Eighteen and eighteen.
Okay. I'm, I'm eighteen and eighteen. I mean, eighteen and twenty-one, you know, and eighteen.
Twenty-one to buy, eighteen to use or purchase?
Yeah.
Or eighteen to use or possess?
Yeah. The, the purchase is twenty-one, and use and possess is eighteen. Trustee Markberg?
I think twenty-one to buy, eighteen to possess, and again, I look at it a few different ways. As one, I think it puts a lot of impact on our police, because you're going to have to catch somebody in the act, and they're going to have to be looking for it. And-
Well, if there's a-
Trustee Schultz made a comment, and I have to agree. That's in our village. I look at it a point of someone from Great Lakes, and all you're old enough to be in the military, and you're restricting them here of being twenty-one. So you're eighteen, you can fight and die, but you can't smoke, but the smoking will kill you. The thing is, I, I, I feel that what's in our village is great, but it should be the twenty-one purchase, eighteen to possess. Another thing is that I will throw in is that I think one of the factors that we forget, it's, it's the upbringing of our children to not possess. I've never been a smoker. My children don't smoke. My parents did. I've been an athlete, and those are the things that step into my mind. And, but I don't think you can force other members that are outside the area, and that's why I'm for the twenty-one, eighteen.
Twenty-one, eighteen and eighteen?
No. Twenty-one to purchase, eighteen possess.
How about use?
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Okay. So twenty-one, eighteen and eighteen. Got it.
Trustee Brown?
Well, I don't know if it makes any difference, but I, I, I would, I would like to do the compromise of twenty-one to buy, eighteen to possess, and twenty-one to use. It's ultimately, yeah, for health reasons.
That's fine, you know. All right, well-
Well, with all being said, two thousand and eighteen, one forty-five, in fact, is the twenty-one, eighteen, eighteen. Am I correct in that? So I would be proud to offer that as a motion.
One forty-six.
Can I respond to-
One forty-five.
Okay, one forty-six.
Am I allowed to respond to something that several of you-
You definitely are.
Point several of you made. So you keep bringing up the, the ability to, to serve in the Army and defend our country and also to smoke, but if you look in the literature, the military is trying to get away from that. They're, they're limiting it in military bases. I just read that Guam, the whole island of Guam, you're not allowed to, and including on the military bases. So, so I don't, I don't think we should be so worried about the, our young military men taking their cigarettes and wanting to smoke here and, and us not being, not being so friendly to that, because I think, I think that's where the military already is. There, there are certain situations, I just read, where they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to use it everywhere on the base, they're not allowed to use it in places of employment, they're not allowed to, to use it during basic training, they're, they're not allowed to use it in uniform. So, so although I deeply respect the military, I don't think that we need to, to encourage in any way whatsoever something that is going to kill them in addition to the risk that they're putting themselves in, in the fighting field. So, so I, I just wanted to sort of dispel, dispel that notion that, that we're not being, we're, we're being less friendly than the, than the military already is to, to, to the young fighting.
No, I, I understand that. Mine, mine was strictly based on Chief's discussion about enforcement.
So anyway, getting back to the point at hand.
Get to a motion here.
I have made a motion. I am making the motion to approve-
Twenty eighteen, one four?
Ordinance two thousand and eighteen, one forty-five.
Okay.
Actually, Trustee Schultz, if I could interject for just one moment? Yes, sir. I noticed in going, there were actually, with what I circulated this morning, was in essence, one forty-five. However, there were a couple of-
Miss-
There was, there was one typo in the original that had suggested that it was twenty-one or eighteen on that provision, so we've clarified that. So I think, and then we also added the deposition, the, I'm sorry, the definitions of possess and use, just to clarify everything else that's in the ordinance, whether you're dealing with it at eighteen or twenty-one is irrelevant. So I think the, the- So I think the, the actual verbiage that, um, you want to adopt is the one that says without seventy-three A.
The first accepts the attorney's recommendation.
Yeah.
For revision to twenty-eighteen, one forty-five.
Second also agrees.
So motion is second. Roll call.
Wait, can I ask before we actually vote, so, so this?
Yeah.
So the, uh, the difference between the one forty-five and the one forty-six is the one forty-six is, is, is what I was looking for, for eight, for the possession at twenty-one?
Actually, one forty-six, uh, would have had both twenty, both at twenty-one.
One-one.
But it didn't have a use provision.
Neither of them had a use provision in them.
Except the ones that were circulated today, and, and the one without seventy-three A is a twenty-one and eighteen with no use provision. So, it's, it's the one that Trustee Schultz and Cook wanted with the clarification.
One forty-five.
Okay, so if I wanted to vote for the twenty-one?
So you should vote no on the motion?
Right.
If you want it to be twenty-one and twenty-one.
Right. But then we'll bring up, are we gonna bring up one forty-six then, or we're not gonna bring up one forty-six?
You can make that move.
So, okay. Alright.
So, alright.
I certainly don't want to be seen as the one who's voting against making it more strict, because I'm voting no.
Right, right, right.
Understood.
Right.
Alright. If there's no further comments or?
B and C, it's B or C, the way it was set up.
Alright, if there's no further, uh, comments or questions from the board, roll call.
Trustee Brown?
No.
Trustee Oppenheim?
No.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? President Byrne?
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, aye, motion carries. What? No, doesn't carry? Okay. What do you need, a super majority?
No, you need four, and the mayor only votes to either create a tie or break a tie. There was no tie, it was three to two.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so now we don't have anything.
I thought we changed that.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Did you change that by ordinance?
Yeah, I thought we did, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was a suggestion by Bob Kennedy to do that.
Okay.
So the mayor should vote it all.
If that's, if that's the case, then.
Because we changed it so that we won't, if we had a meeting where we only had three trustees and the mayor.
Yeah.
That we could still have four affirmative votes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can I vote now?
That clarification, you have voted?
Yeah, I believe so, I believe that, yeah.
So could I, now we could say motion approved?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Subject to research, no problem.
But I thought we changed that, so we could do it.
Yeah, it, it is a good idea, if we gotta get to the.
So can I move that we, uh?
I thought we did.
Could we have a roll call vote for, uh, one forty-six then?
Need to make a motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we have a roll call vote for.
Yeah, this is the, to go twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, approval of passage of ordinance two thousand eighteen, one four-six, and ordinance amending, code of ordinances of Village Vernon Hills, chapter ten, tobacco sales in chapter twenty-six, smoke-free air regulations. Alright, so there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Schultz?
No.
Trustee Cook?
No.
Trustee Markwart?
No.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
President Byrne?
No. Motion carries.
No, it doesn't.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
I didn't, I didn't know we had a trustee being triloquist, you know? Jesus, okay, motion.
Total chaos.
Mo- motion fails, okay. Alright, we're gonna keep moving here then. Alright, new business, resolution two thousand eighteen, dead zero five nine, two, 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 granting approval to the operation of outdoor merchandise display and sales establishment for the Whole Foods located at eight-five-one North Milwaukee Avenue. Is anybody here for this one?
Yeah, there's a representative of Whole Foods here.
Okay.
I, I can give a brief summary, just, uh, as you guys probably know by now, the village board had informally given them Whole Foods permission to display their outdoor merchandise display on the, uh, east side of the building, uh, that way they could have their merchandise out there for the grand opening, knowing they would have to come to the board for approval, and with no guarantees that they'd get approval. They're here tonight now questioning that approval. Um, it's kind of what you see is what you get, um, the difference here is, uh, and, and they'd keep all their merchandise, uh, on the sidewalk, only on the east side of the building, uh, pretty, they'd keep, uh, fifteen-foot clear aisle width from the parking lot into the main entrance, they'd keep a four-foot aisle width, uh, ru- uh, on the sidewalk running parallel with the building, so you can move around and into and out of the building without having to go onto the parking lot. Uh, the request also includes a waiver from the requirement that you can only display goods between April first and, uh, and the end of September, they want to be able to display goods throughout the year, they want to display pumpkins around Halloween and Christmas trees around Christmas, and so on and so forth. So, if the board believes the request tonight is appropriate, then a motion of, uh, approving the attached resolution, approving the outdoor merchandise display and sales permit, including a waiver to display goods year-round, uh, is recommended per the attachment, uh, attached resolution attached to your packet.
Okay, are there comments or questions on this?
Do we allow?
I don't know how much is gonna be put out in the debt of winter, but, you know.
Right. So I've, I've always been a little bit curious about this for some of the other, um, establishments around the village, because I thought many of them, and we had included in their, uh, their approval rights, that they were not allowed to have sales outside, um, except for special, uh, events.
There's, 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 in our licensing part of the ordinance, there are provisions where you can ask for a license, come to the board, uh, and you, you can ask for a license to display goods on a sidewalk in front of your store only. Uh, Mariano's has this license, um, uh, Lowe's has this license, um, Home Depot has a license similar to this, except that since they want to display goods in their parking lot, they have to come back to the board on an annual basis for renewal, not just a one-time basis. Off the top of my head, those are the establishments that have it, I'm sure there's more out there. Uh, Whole Foods requests is similar to that of Mariano's, where it would be only on the sidewalk and only on the front part of the store near their main entrance.
Michael has. Which is similar to what Michaels does.
Uh, Michaels, yeah.
They have to request it.
Lobby Michaels, very similar.
But it's not, so you, you're making the distinction, they're allowed to display it, but they're not actually selling it?
Well, it's an outdoor merchandise display and sales license that you're, uh, approving, so it's display and sale that you would be approving.
It's exactly the same as what Mariano's has and Lowe's has, and what about Menards, they have the same?
Uh, Menards does not have that in place, they have not approached the board for approval of that.
Is the transaction consummated there, or you gotta take it back in the store?
Uh, typically, they, they, they could do it either way, uh, typically, they take it back to the cashier to purchase it.
Okay. And there's somebody out there?
Yeah, and they, you know.
That works there to monitor things?
It, it's, sometimes there are, sometimes there're not, I've been to Mariano's where they have it right by the main door, but they don't have someone out there monitoring it, it could be melons or something like that, that's displayed.
What if the, what if the guy's making the hot dogs or something, or hamburgers, something, they walk in?
Yeah, yeah.
Just go back into the store?
Um, in that case, I think they, they take the, if, for the little hot dog stand in front of Mariano's, in that case, I think they take the money, uh, at, at the place where you purchased the hot dog.
So they set a little cash register?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I've seen the exchange done both ways.
Trustee Cook?
Um, they're allowed to go year-round?
Uh, well, they're, they're not, the board would have to approve a waiver in connection with this particular request. Typically, you can only have it between, uh, April first and the end of September of each.
Yeah, that's what I thought, and the, 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 because one of my concerns was going year-round. Um, the, the other concern would be that, um, we make sure that there are occasions at Mariano's, and I like that store a lot, but there are occasions that the front of that store is in disarray because of some of their, you know, stuff that they've set out there, when they had that recent thing with water, it was like somebody had set up some, you know, um, freestanding little tents that you use at, at baseball games for shade, and, and, and it just, it didn't look very professional, um, and that happens on occasion. Um, so I'd want to make sure that we, you know, make sure that you know that it should be as professional-looking as possible, but I, I really don't like the idea of going year-round, and would this be, I mean, nobody right now can go.
Uh, Mariano, Mariano, Mariano's, excuse me, is the only one that has a year-round, oh, oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, okay.
Since we already do it, I, then I.
Withdraw that.
Yeah.
Alright, so do we have a motion to, to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, and this is ordinance eight, two eighteen, five nine. Okay.
Yep.
Roll call. Got a motion is second, right?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Okay, we, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's your name anyway?
Uh, Rob Anderson, and my offices are at seventeen fifty-one South Naperville Road in Wheaton, for the record. I'm an attorney for Whole Foods.
Yeah, he's the mouthpiece.
Yeah, 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 I get you.
He's been here before, many times.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, uh, hey, we're almost there, huh?
We were close.
We're getting to Glacier now, right? Resolution two thousand eighteen, dead zero six zero, resolution granting approval to operate a, an outdoor special event for Glacier Ice Arena located at six-seven Lakeview Parkway, and what is this, my, a tent?
Yeah, this is a tent on the east side of the building that they're putting up for overflow attendance. It's been a popular event in the past, uh, it's basically a fundraiser for their, uh, hockey team, uh, the Ice Dogs, it also, uh, would, uh, benefit their scholarship program. Uh, they'd have a shoot the puck contest, a silent and public auction, they'd have a DJ inside the building, uh, and they'd have catered food, so it's just a fundraiser really, but because the tent is, will be set up on the outside of the building adjacent to the main entrance, part of it's outside, so that necessitates.
Yeah.
They've done this before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, same with they've.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
And as, okay, I was gonna say, as the, uh, former crazy hockey dad, I'd like to make the second, but I'll.
Go ahead.
Don't, don't, yeah, come on, there's a motion is a second, uh, and Markwart's the second.
Yes.
Okay, Jesus, okay, oh my God, alright, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Oh, no.
No, I'm trying to do the same.
Oh, no, no, motion.
No, motion carries, I was trying to be playful like the doctor there, you know, Trustee Takaoka, you know. Alright, motion carries. Alright, now we're going to any, what, any new, new business to come before the board is in, or communication, or? Anybody want to, Trustee Schultz?
Uh, two things, uh, number one, uh, I want to thank the people of Lake County, uh, they came out, uh, to vote yesterday, uh, fifty-five percent turnout, that's outstanding.
Typical.
Um, for a midterm, that was.
Best.
Pretty good, that's, it was above average.
Yeah.
Um, but also reminding folks that there's a municipal election, and the last time, it was only eighteen percent. So keep up the good work, folks, and come out for all the elections. I know the school board is looking for people to run both school boards, right? Um, both seventy-three and one twenty-eight, and I'm assuming, uh, one oh-three and one twenty-five too, but, uh, get involved, folks, uh, it's a good thing. The other thing, again, while this is not the appropriate form, I'd just like to remind everybody that a couple of folks lost their lives in Kentucky, and eleven people lost their lives in Pittsburgh, and I'll keep repeating this message every time I see something like this occur, uh, this is craziness, we need to do something about it, and I think you all know what I'm referring to, so.
The craziness part?
Yes, sir.
And, and what, the AK forty-seven part?
Uh, well, it'd be a AR fifteen, which is a, which is a modified M sixteen, which fires a two-twenty-three high-velocity, uh, caliber round, which.
Kind of like our assault rifles there, Chief, or, or got?
That's what he's talking about, yes, sir.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah, anything, yeah, well, this, this takes it to a much higher level than us, so.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody else have anything, I, I, I don't know what I do with the invite, but, uh, you know, I just want to give a plug for what District, uh, one twenty-eights got a, a dinner and fundraiser on Friday night at White Deer Run, right? Anybody got that announcement? You do?
Principal does.
No.
Oh, yeah, well, why don't you come up here and just comment on that, and then maybe you could just stay for the committee of the hall, and we'll move you up to the top.
Good evening, everybody, John Gilliam.
Oh, hi, John.
Principal of Vernon Hills High School, president. Uh, yeah, the District one twenty foundation has its, uh, annual big event coming up this Friday night.
Yeah.
Uh, held locally at White Deer Run, so tickets still available through the website on the, uh.
Figure two hundred people though, to get, what's the capacity, about two hundred?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, we, I don't.
Probably close.
I don't think they've hit two hundred in the last couple of years, they, that'd be a great showing if they did, they'd be super excited, but, uh, you're all welcome.
Yeah, for, what, seventy-five bucks?
I think that's what it is.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll call you back here shortly. Alright, so, uh, anything else to come before the board? Now we gotta go to a closed session?
Yes, sir, for personnel, but we have nothing to bring back before the board.
Okay. Alright, everybody clear on that, so, uh, is there a motion to, uh, adjourn the board meeting?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the hall meeting to order. This thing of business has gotta be approval in a minute, and I just shuffled my papers again.
I'll, in fact, it's approval of the, uh, for, uh, October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion is second, comments, questions, deletions, corrections, if not, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. How much time does one twenty-eight need?
Depends on how many questions you have, probably, uh, five minutes?
Okay, well, alright, here, we're gonna do request for an outdoor, huh?
No.
Yeah, I'll switch, I'm gonna switch them with, uh, the Lashen Community Park, I'll put them at four, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, the first thing is request for an outdoor dining and seating establishment permit for Kuma's Corner, located at nine-two-five North Milwaukee Avenue, and Kuma's is here, huh?
I am.
And what's your name, please?
Uh, Lisa Weatherston.
And you wanna?
Lisa.
And where do you live, or, you know, your address, town?
I live in Chicago, but I, uh, do, yeah, new store development and marketing for the Kuma's.
And what, what do you do for them?
New store development, training, hiring, and, uh, marketing.
Yeah, and you're, you're not open yet, though?
On the thirteenth, on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I think you all got friends and family invites, if not, just shoot me an email.
Thank you.
That's alright, okay, uh, so, what say, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is similar to other requests in Melody Farm, uh, Kuma's Corner is proposing, uh, eleven tables, uh, with a seating capacity of thirty-eight customers, the patio, as you've probably know by now, is on the south side of their end unit tenant space, uh, there'd be a fence around the perimeter of the patio with a self-closing self-latch and gate to separate people who may be consuming alcohol from the general public. Um, again, similar, similar to other requests, if the board feels that the outdoor dining license is appropriate, then a motion approving the, the attached resolution is recommended, and staff is recommending approval.
Is there a roof detail on this, I, it'll?
Uh, we can, here, Mike can put something up on the screen for you.
Uh, we can, here, Mike can put something up on the screen for you.
There is not, there's four large umbrellas, but there isn't anything that covers it.
There's a look at it right there.
Well, that's the main entrance, right?
Yeah, that's the south side.
There's just a small area, but it doesn't completely cover the patio.
Yeah, there's four, it's four umbrellas, freestanding umbrellas, that, that doesn't cover the entire patio, but a pretty decent portion of it. And then the winter, they close, they can fold up and get put away.
Okay. Trustee Cook.
And, and you've been made aware that the umbrellas need to be plain?
That's right.
No advertising, anything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can't say Bex on them.
Pardon me?
Bex.
Uh, no, sir.
No advertising at all.
Okay, anyway, all right, that's good. Uh, all right, so is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries, welcome to town.
Tuesday.
One o'clock.
Really?
Hey, there.
Yeah, that's the grand opening.
What is that on your back? Is that a jacket from there?
That's their, that's their logo.
That's the logo!
What is it, a, a bear?
Yeah, it's a bear.
The original owner, Mike Kane, had Akita's, and.
A what?
An Akita, and it's bear, Japanese, blah, blah, yeah, so, that's it. Kuma's Corner. That's it, it was named, it's named after his dog.
He's kind of a, they're kind of mean little bastards, right?
They are.
Yeah. Yeah.
Who's what is very.
Somebody I worked with had one, and it was like, you know, I'd, we'd go to meetings, and I'd like, I'd be picking the person up, and it's like, I didn't go in the house, 'cause this thing would, you know.
Yeah, yeah, she would, at the original one, she would be on the patio, and, yeah.
Like you need an ice pick when you run into those dogs. Okay, well, that's, take care.
Thank you.
It looks like a bear, for Christ's sake.
It is a bear.
It is a bear.
Isn't it really, no, but the dog, she, she's talking about the dog, right?
No, but the logo's a bear.
Yeah. Uh-huh, Jesus. All right, okay. All right, what's next? Uh, request for an outdoor dining and seating establishment permit for Rhodey Modern Mediterranean, located at eight seven five North Milwaukee Avenue. Okay, hi.
Hello.
And who are you?
My name's Anna Sevilla.
And where are you from?
Um, I live in Vernon Hills, actually.
Okay, that's nice, okay. All right, Mike, you have the floor.
Um, this is a pretty straightforward request, as you know, Rhodey Mediterranean is relocating to Melody Farm. They would have just three tables with a seating capacity of twelve customers located right in front of their store. They'd keep a clear aisle width to walk parallel to the building, also a clear width to get inside their restaurant. They do not serve alcohol, so there would not be a fence as normally required. So tonight, if the cow feels the request is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the request for an outdoor dining license.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to, second.
Motion, the motion to approve is trustee Markwart. And then trustee Schultz got the second this one, even though it's not related to hockey. Okay, any further comments or questions?
Can I ask?
Yes.
To, so you're relocating, you're not keeping both locations open?
We are not. That, the one in Milwaukee Route sixty will open December sixth. So right now, they're trying to figure out whether we maintain ourselves open until the lease is over at our current location at Route forty-five, or if we just transfer everyone out once the new store opens.
So Starbucks.
Right down the street.
Starbucks can take over your space, and it'll just be a bigger one, right?
Yeah.
I'm not kidding. Uh, okay, well, all right, fine, any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And let the record reflect, there's no bear on her coat. Okay, uh, all right, next is District one twenty-eight, twenty-eight representatives wish to make presentation to the board, and this is Joe Carey.
Thank you, Your Honor, this is a concept presentation, District twenty-eight, one twenty-eight, excuse me, is here this evening to propose to construct a forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty square foot addition. This will consist of a seventeen thousand square foot addition involving a three-story classrooms, involving a STEM lab, as well as a one-story expansion of the cafeteria and dining area, as well as additional office space. That's consisting of forty-six hundred square feet, as well as a two-story addition, which consists of a gym and dance studio, as well as a changing area. That's located at the west side of the building, as you indicate on your screen. As part of this, no parking variations will be required, they do still have adequate parking for the site. This will require an amendment to the previously approved special use permit, and so at that, the commissioners are here to answer any questions.
Who's the architect on this?
I mean, S.T.R.
S.T., okay. Who's here from there?
Right there.
Oh, wow, that's, that's nice timing. All right, you wanna state your name for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Mike Henderson, I live at one thirty-one South Eighth Avenue in La Grange. Office is downtown Chicago.
Okay, so, these are just gonna be additions to the building?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
So, so the idea is that we're just matching the existing building, so we're adding a gymnasium basically into the front, which is on the west side, expanding the cafeteria and serving area in the courtyard, and a classroom addition on the east side. And so the materials, the size, the architecture, everything is basically will match, and so our intention is for it to look like it's always been there, so.
Dave, you, you've looked at this already, or is there any questions you have just with, from an engineering standpoint?
Not overly concerned with the majority of the engineering items. We are working with their engineer in terms of just making sure that they meet the thresholds in terms of how much impervious surface they're adding to the site. We want to make sure they don't go over that number, because if they do, then detention requirements would kick in, and I'm not sure where they would put detention necessarily. That's an issue that we're gonna work through.
When we get the, how big is the detention pond at, at, what, at C D W's, isn't it? The one to the east?
Yes, so it was sized according to a certain amount of coverage.
It'd take some of their stormwater, right? No?
Tributary areas, some of it would go towards that pond, potentially some of it is going across the street to the pond on the inside of that curve, too. So, without boring you with all the details, we'll work through that with your engineer, but generally what they have in front of us is favorable.
And you're not going to referendum?
No.
And how much is this gonna cost?
Uh, well, we won't really know until we've been it up, but at this point, our estimates are sitting around, what, about twenty-six point five million dollars.
Yeah. Different taxing district than one twenty-eight, I mean, than seventy-three, just for the record.
Correctment of a year and a half.
Okay.
Our goal will be to be open for the fall of twenty-one year, twenty-twenty-one year.
So what do you got? I mean, you don't even have to give the speech on this, 'cause the state will, you know, don't they inspect the schools? And we just approve, what, the site plan?
Well, and because it's in the business park, yeah.
It is a special use, so it will go through the planning and zoning commission to amend the site plan. And we would request direction for the board as it relates to the waiving of any fees related to technical review or special.
How much are the fees?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Total?
It's.
Oh, yeah, but how about the, do we collect fees on the whole building? It's, when they're building, or is that, 'cause it's state inspected, no?
That, that's the state, that's the State Department of Board of Education.
Only seven hundred and fifty dollars?
That's pertaining to the technical review, application, and submittal, not associated to the building permit fees, which.
Well, do we issue those, or is that the state?
We do not, the state issues that.
Huh?
The Village does not issue building permits to the school districts.
Right.
The state of Illinois does, yeah.
And the state's not gonna waive that?
I can do it.
Okay, fine, I, I mean, I'll open it up, trustee Schultz.
I, I was just made aware, going to the District seventy-three informational meetings about a requirement that you need to have a certain amount of green space, that the state measures you on that, you need to get special dispensation if you don't have sufficient green space on your campus. This is what I was told with District seventy-three.
This can't even be remotely cro, cro, close, by God, they got fifty acres.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, it's your.
But that's the V hack, that's.
Plus the twenty for the building.
It's, the, other than the stadium itself, the remainder of it really isn't part of their campus, per se.
Why not? It's connected.
All of those fields.
Well, I don't know that, I'm, I'm asking questions.
Okay, well.
So, are you guys have enough green space on the property that is designated as the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
More than.
And you don't need special dispensation.
But what's dedicated to the, the building itself, and you guys, I'm sure, noticed, it's about twenty acres, which was pers, purchased. It's all was purchased, and then the rest was free.
Which is another fifty or so.
Another fifty, 'cause you got, yeah, you got about a seventy-acre campus, huh?
Close to eighty.
Yeah. Okay, anybody want, else have a talking part? You guys wanna say anything else?
Just ready for the questions.
Oh, trustee Cook.
Yeah, I, I had a question about, in looking at it, the, the, the extension on the east side there, how, what's the setback off, it's not gonna affect the drive-through driveway?
No, so, on that side, there's visitor parking in there, and we're losing a few spaces in, in that spot. We're, it's the same parking lot, we're just narrowing it up, so we're losing, you know, a handful of spaces.
And what's gonna be the setback from the, do you know how far it is from actual driveline?
Oh.
East side?
Yeah.
Oh, Area C, that's, let's say, sixty, seventy, at its closest point, it's probably about seventy-five feet.
No, I mean, from the, there is a.
Oh, Area A?
Right.
Oh, it's, it's no closer to the street than, than, than the current.
I'm talking about the, the, where traffic, the distance between a traffic lane in the parking lot.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's in the green space. It would be right against the sidewalk.
Okay. So you'd still have a complete sidewalk and.
Oh, yeah.
Separation, okay.
Yeah, I believe it's seven feet, we're permitting about seven feet for the sidewalk. Well, a little bit more than a normal five-foot or six-foot sidewalk.
Okay.
What's the surplus you guys are on, I'd just like to hear it.
Surplus? Well, I'm sorry, what was the question? Apologies.
The school District one twenty-eight has a surplus.
In terms of fund balance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're talking about on an annual basis, not including early taxes, you're sitting right around about eighty million?
That's a good answer, 'cause that's exactly what I was hoping to say. I already knew, knew the answer. Hence, the twenty-six million, you don't have to go to the taxpayers. Okay, all right, oh, I, you wanna, do you even have to give your speech to them, that this is concept, or?
No.
No, do you? Hey, go ahead, I don't care.
At the end of the day, it shouldn't bother anything, so, good luck.
So what, you need anything in the way of a motion, but other than waiving fees? Yeah. Okay, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, so you can go through the drill now, it's P and Z and staff. Okay, well, it's great, this should be nice.
Thank you.
People like the, the high school.
Yeah.
I like the high school.
I like the high school.
We don't make kids didn't get the going.
I think we have consensus, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get my check yet from, you know, the taxing districts, you know, but that's okay. It's, it's a great facility.
Head one. And she's working there.
Okay, guys, thank you, and.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sorry we made you wait so long.
Okay, is that about it? Lashin Center, we're not doing anything, right?
Yes.
We're knocking it down, right? We're not doing the drawing in there, are we?
She has a presentation.
Yeah.
Well, the drawing is what, three hundred and fifty thousand? What do you, would, are you three D design?
Let me kick off the presentation for you. So, we have Sharon Dixon from Dixon Studios here to make the presentation. Josh Hanson with our Public Works Department has been spearheading it with the Village. So, really, the request for the Village, we'd like you to, from staff, we'd like you to review what she's proposing.
Was this the drawing that's been sitting in the conference room?
It's new and improved, so.
Does that mean it's cheaper?
We'll get back, we'll get, we'll explain that as part of her presentation. Ultimately, what we'd like to get direction from the board, as far as the Lashin Center, and ultimately what we're looking to do, it's in the current year's budget, we'd like your direction to move forward with demoing of the Lashin Center. We've just lost another, there's two main air handlers, we lost one of them, so we, we are looking to demolish that as soon as possible, we're hoping to get that direction. Our schedule has been to try to have it under contract sometime January. Windows are closed, less inconvenience to people.
So we, we put this out the bid yet?
Uh, we have not, seeking your direction, board's direction to do so.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we all agreed with that already.
Just like to ask those extra questions to make sure before we get the wrecking ball out of that.
Well, I know that, I, I know that, and that's, what are we budgeting for that?
For the demo? The demo itself, I think, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's like three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Mike Atkinson's been very helpful in terms of already hiring a asbestos environmental consultant, so we've already looked into what we may get ourselves into. It helps us put together the demo packet and get that out on the street, so hearing no objections, we'd like to move forward with the demo of that, thank you.
And if I could add, Sharon and, and Dave put a great presentation together and invited the neighborhood to come in, and, I don't know, there's plus or minus thirty people, I guess, twenty to thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, and basically, you know, there was, you know, why can't we have a kiddie park? And it's, well, we've got a kiddie park at one end, and we've got the other, and from And it's, well, we've got a kiddie park at one end, and we've got the other, and from my perspective, why can't we have a memorial? That's neither here nor there. And what they really put together was a very nice passive park that'll complement this building, complement this campus. And I think be a great amenity for our seniors during the, the summer months, that they can go out there, a short stroll out here. But I don't want to steal her thunder, but she had some great ideas that she put pen to paper.
All right, you could pitch us.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sharon Dixon, I'm a landscape architect with Dixon Design Studio. For the record, we're at five two six Skyline Drive in Algonquin, Illinois. And tonight I present to you the Lashin Community Park. So, in March of this year, the Village of Vernon Hills put, the Public Works Department put forth an RFQ, a request for qualifications. They were seeking an experienced and creative landscape architect to further their design intent for the redevelopment of this park site. The Lashin Community Center building, obviously that will be demolished, and it will be reimagined as a public park space. Provided within the RFQ were some design guidelines stipulations. They included what's listed on the slide as providing thoughts and suggestions regarding the concept drawings that were part of the package. The plan you see before you was put together by the Public Works Department. Preservation of existing vegetation, use of native plants, promoting sustainability, and being aware of the village being able to maintain this in a long-term sustainable manner. Some suggested design elements were a centralized patio, pergola, water feature, dedication plaque, seating areas, landscape lighting, irrigation, potentially gazebo, boulders, tiered retaining wall.
Where's the retaining wall theoretically?
Theoretically, in this picture, southwest or southeast corner of the pergola, kind of that black and red area, striped area was the pergola behind that, planting some tiered walls to that. They also included this elevation which might help answer that question. So they envisioned a dedication plaque for Mr. Larry Lashin, water feature, some seating areas, pergola with additional seating underneath, potentially water features, some tiered walls. We do have some grade transitions on that site already, so working within that, creating a functional aesthetic. I'm sorry?
You have any other pictures?
I sure do, I have, I have some additional ones. Just to give a little bit of background, obviously, the Lashin Center Community Building is in the center of the slide. We wanted to show some context because of some of the neighbor comments, concerns, questions reflected the adjacent uses. So obviously, the village hall is to the north, we have an open green lawn and tennis courts to the west, we have neighborhoods to the south. And then to our east, a shopping center and the parking for the Vernon Hills Golf Club. So if we were to overlay our proposed park plan as it currently stands, it would look something like this. It acts as a really nice transitional buffer between the more active public use of the village hall versus the passive use of the neighborhood and the houses to the south and southeast. As you can see, the park is geared to activating the northern half, the southern half will stay very passive, and as much vegetation as we can preserve and make sense for long-term sustainability of the plants that are there will remain, that will act as an additional buffer to the neighbors to our south. Zooming in a little bit more, now you see the park in its entirety as proposed to date. It does have sidewalks, additional crosswalks that connect up into the park, into the centralized plaza area. We've incorporated some additional parking, which might help with some of the senior parking that you've had issues with in the past, that you're currently dealing with. And then it incorporates some additional site amenities. So currently, as, as I understand it, the seniors are allowed to park in the cul-de-sac circle that is directly south of the village hall. And you can see they, we do have an additional parking spot that's, or parking area that's existing on the northwest corner of the Lashin Center. And so just south of that is an additional bank of parking, and if I skip to the next slide, you'll see that. Approximately additional five spaces, that is kind of due west on the park site. If I have a, I don't know if this is a pointer. Right here. So, this is where the seniors park currently. Can I use the mouse? Okay, yeah, because you're looking at a screen, okay. So, this cul-de-sac circle is, is where, is currently here, and that's where the seniors park today. You do have this bank of parking here, that remains, but we would be adding an additional parking bank right here for approximately five spaces. So this is new parking, not currently in existence today. Correct, correct, so the, the seniors could continue to park here.
Close to the building.
Yeah.
Not just the, you know, the circle.
Right.
Okay, just going there to use the park? That would just be his hood.
The focus of the redevelopment of the park isn't necessarily to add in senior, additional senior parking. It's a plus that we can add some parking to this redevelopment, but keep the majority of the, the land in public green space. So if you allow me to continue forward, this is the overall park site. I, we consider a north and south half, again, the south half will stay very passive, most of the vegetation will remain intact, that was important to the neighbors as part of our feedback from the presentation meeting to them. Where the north half, which is closer to the village hall, makes a lot of sense to activate that space. So this is the entire park site. We zoom in a little further, this is now the north half of the park site. This is where the majority of the activation of this site will occur. We've incorporated new sidewalk walking pass, we have some pergola with some seating beneath, some seating in the sun, some seating on walls, benches, swings, additional lush landscapes, some changes in terrain, and a water wall that will have, will be the feature of the, the park that will include a dedication plaque to Mr. Larry Lashin.
Like racking chairs there or anything?
No, everything will be fixed, so nothing would be movable. So we would have four top tables with umbrellas, we would have some lounge chairs. We're looking at potentially putting some swings affixed to the pergola, just additional added element of interest. The park, although welcomes everyone, young and old, is geared more towards a user that's non-child, you know, there's no play equipment in this park. It's not intended to have that, it's a passive park to complement some of the other parks that might be more child geared for playground equipment elsewhere in the village. So, in order to help you and visualize this park and convey our message with design, we've included some 3D images. So this is a bird's eye view, standing or flying south, looking north. You can see again, the south half is very passive, we have added some sidewalks in order to access the new area and to connect some existing sidewalks. We're potentially thinking about a carriage walk along Evergreen Drive that would connect up into the park.
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So this is a closer view of that northern half, and this is where some of the detail amenity spaces can be better seen. So, majority of the park will stay in mowed turf, so mowed lawn. As you come into the center of the park where the plaza space is, we're going to do some more lush vegetation. Some of that might be native, as in prairie, and some of that might be more manicured as in, you know, some, some shrubs, some perennials, ornamental grasses, trees, kind of a mix of the two. The centralized plaza will include some low stone seat walls. Some of them will act as retaining walls to kind of bulk up the space, to add some height and scale to the park space. There is a pergola that is mirrored north and south. The south half has potentially some swings underneath with some seating. The north half has the proposed water wall, which is.
You got your mark or your arrow, what are you talking about putting swings?
Okay, so, south half pergola, north half pergola. Potentially, under the south pergola, we'd have some actual park swings that would be attached to the, the roof structure here.
That'd be your rocking chair.
And so the benches are movable?
No, nothing is movable, everything is fixed, so.
Oh, they're swingables?
Yeah, they're swingable, so they're, they're hung by some kind of cabling or chains. There's some affixed tabletops, so, you know, four top tables with a metal umbrella, so again, helping to reduce the maintenance on the public works, so nothing would have to come down in the winter per se, it could stay up year round. Even some of the elements of the stone wall, you know, this can act as seating as lo, as, as well as an architectural feature to the park. We have some lounge chairs that you'll see in the next rendering, but those are also affixed, just offering different spaces. The lounge chair's plastic, it's, it's a heavy duty, recycled plastic.
And then the waterfalls?
Water wall here, so let me keep going. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to zoom in and get you a little closer so you can see it a little better.
Before you leave that, well, okay, this same picture, what kinds of, of flowers and stuff are you? How will people know this is different from noxious weeds that? No, I'm, I'm serious, because sometimes when you look at this kind of a natural grass, like you've got here, when they start to get tall, it starts to look like somebody forgot to mow the place.
Sure, and we can accomplish that, we can head that off of the pass in two ways. One, we can actually have some signage, some wayfaring signage that will explain what that is. Signage for maintenance crews that they cannot mow, not to be disturbed, prairie plants, so that's something visual and easy to do. But we would also implement a management plan with the Public Works that would take care of this site, so that we hopefully wouldn't have that comment come forth.
Can you give me a ballpark on this, what I'm looking at, price-wise?
Price-wise, sure.
Money?
So, to head that off before I, I give you a number, this is still in conceptual phase. So we haven't gone to construction documents, that would be up to the boards.
Be this tech, I just need a number.
Depending on the amenities that are included and selected, somewhere between five hundred and seventy-five thousand and one point two million. So there's a range of, what you see today is all bells and whistles.
We could use it to pave streets for God's sake. We just get a turf cover here, you know, move on. Come on.
So we, we understand that, we, we, we understand that this needs to go through a budget process, we understand that it needs to compete with other projects. In terms of the base of this, it's closer to the half million dollars, which is obviously a lot of money. In terms of the pergola and some of those other things, those are big ticket items that.
How about the water walls?
Brought it up to the one point two. In terms of the waterfall, that, that, that's not a huge cost, we're not talking it's a huge water fountain, it's a small pond feature that's being recirculated. But I, I do acknowledge that your, your comment and concern as far as what the price tag is, and that's why we have a budget process and we'll go through that discussion.
I agree. I just, I, you know.
There needs to be value engineering, there's no.
You think? Yeah.
And I think the purpose of tonight was to give you an idea of what this space could be, whether is this is the question, but it's something, you know, what, what is the potential this site could produce?
What's your, like, fee percentage on a project like this?
I'm only involved in the design aspect, I'm not involved in the construction aspect at this point, and so my fee.
But if you're the architect, right?
Correct, I'm the landscape architect.
Okay, what did we budget for this lady and her company?
Her contract for putting together the preliminary designs, 3D, et cetera, is, I think we're at like twelve thousand dollars. So for these concepts and visioning this, we haven't spent a lot of money, that's why we're presenting it to you.
I want some more detention, because they have a pond. Little children can take their remote control boats and, you know, sail them around on the pond.
It is, the pond would have to be situated on the south.
It's very difficult to build a pond on a hill.
Right.
You know, wait a second.
I mean, Dave, you're the engineer.
Let's go to California, they take mountains and they grind them down and they build a town on top of them, you know?
So we do, we do acknowledge some of your comments we're receiving, maybe we can go through a few more slides and then work through.
I want some kind of sliding place then, if we got this hill for the little ones.
So kind of continuing through the park site, this is the view west of the center plaza area. There are some grade transitions across the site, so wherever possible, we're trying to make ADA accessible, but there might be some spots on the park that we have to have some low steps. Something that we could make, you know, more of an architectural feature as well as functional, so long linear steps going up into the park. If you can see at the right-hand side, right-hand side of the slide, potentially a sculptural platform that could have some public art, that could either be a permanent installation or something that could be, continue to be transferred out through the seasons or through the artists within the community, might be a nice feature that could be included in the park. Here's a closer up view of what those pergolas might look like, we're maybe playing with the roof patterning so that does produce a level of shade, but also could have an interesting shadow pattern on the pavement underneath. Breaking up some of the pavement, so it's not a monotonous concrete walkway, but could we have some brick detail inlay would be nice. Different kinds of seating create different spaces for different users within the park. Potentially having some vines and greenery grow up those structures just for additional interest in helping to create more of a screen, private space from the road. This is a closer up view of that water wall and the dedication to Mr. Larry Lashin. So we're looking at a nice classic plaque that would go on the west end wall of the water wall, that would mention him and his contribution to the village. Corten steel panels, potentially six across the water wall, this would be where the water would come down into a hidden channel, the channel would be at grade. So no open water in terms of anyone playing in it, liability for it, it's strictly a feature that runs down the wall. Corten steel panels help to lower the maintenance, you know, it's not running across the stone, that potentially might degrade over time, but it also creates a nice artistic feature.
Can we just, you know, duplicate like a miniature millennial park? Put a little bean in there?
If you would like to go in that direction, we can certainly draw up a concept.
Smaller bean?
Yes, so if.
Where people can, I don't, I, you know, yeah, okay.
So we, we just show, you know, an abstract sculpture, but, you know, that could be something being like if you want to go in that direction. Public art is big in my, in my wheelhouse. So.
No, you, you know, in all, what's your name again?
My name is Sharon Dixon.
Yeah, I mean, this looks very nice, it's just the price tag is very nice too.
Well, question, this is, yeah.
Now we're going to value engineer, I know, you know.
The, the main thing is, we need to give Dave consensus to knock down the building.
Oh, that's, oh, no question.
Do, do some grading and do a turf cover for now.
Right.
And then revisit this with our, our budgeting process and look at a extended phased process.
Yeah, this has the potential to be done over a number of budget cycles, correct, over several years?
It could, definitely.
Consider an SSA for, you know, lawthart.
No.
Well, I'm not, to spend, I'd rather have him repairs reach for a half million bucks.
We, we understand that.
Come on.
We understand that, that, that's why, the, the main thing is to salvage as much of the foliage, trees, whatever you want to call it, as possible. And get a turf cover over it and, and get a reasonable grading done to it, so that we have a base then to work from as we decide to go forward in the future, or not.
Trustee Schultz, I appreciate that comment, some, some of the scope of work and, and what we're really trying to work through is, as part of Sharon's efforts, there's a tree inventory, grading information, all of this is very valuable when we go with, with Mike Atkinson's help for the demo. So, that is useful information. Some of the additive is, what are we going to, to place if we're going to move forward with something like that? We need to know, are we compacting clay, will it be stone underneath, what are we looking to do? And so I appreciate the feedback, I understand that this is more expensive than what you're willing to spend, I'm reading that from the board. So, we understand that, and I think we're getting some direction. I'd like to see a few more of Sharon's slides as far as some of the, some of the concepts, if you have any more of your presentations.
That was, that was the majority of the slides I had, I can certainly go back and talk through some more. Perhaps maybe if I ended on the bird's eye view.
We got to knock the building down first, and then, you know, basically at the low end, it looks like it might cost us a million bucks between knocking the building down and even going up to the five hundred thousand.
Right, you know, you're talking about the, the brick, you know, we can look at stamped concrete.
Nah, that's not good.
Yeah, that, that works out very well.
I think also one of the values it was having the residents understand we are talking about knocking down the building, because they've been asking that question.
Yeah.
The park district, some of the questions that came up with the park district, and through, through this, residents had expressed in terms of the need for a smaller park area. They, they had proposed that it would go here, but it was good discussion. So, the village manager and I have talked to the park district, and there's some concept of potentially at the tennis courts area, maybe you would add seventy, seventy thousand dollars of improvements, that might be the park district who would do that. And maybe it addresses a need for a smaller park, but these are the things we're learning as part of going through this process.
Yeah, if, if you look at the slide that's on the screen now, the area just to the north of the tennis courts, that's the village green area. It's an open area right now, there's a potential that we put in some apparatus there in conjunction with the park district, but again, phase thirteen.
So I think as far as, I don't know if there's individual questions that the board members may have, or if, if I've already interpreted what your feedback is.
Would you like a motion to direct staff to go out and garner bids?
To knock the building down, yeah.
For the demolition and rough grading and turf cover of the Lashin Center facility, campus, whatever.
I would like to ask a question because of demolition. Three hundred thousand, well, winter is fine, but I, I'm looking at also it's the cost of removal. Even the point of a, for the fire department to do a training.
There's too many hazardous materials.
Oh, boy.
No, they.
And then you, you lessen, you lessen your.
That's a good point, but it's been discussed, but there's, they've got hazardous materials and other things.
I didn't know how much hit, well, when you were starting, you mentioned asbestos.
There's some mold in there too.
That was one of the first points I brought out to the community when they were here at the meeting was, hey, folks, there's going to be some people in moon suits for a few days at the very beginning of this project, as they go through the asbestos abatement. And, but once we get past that, then it's normal demolition, bulldozers and dump trucks.
Okay, well, I appreciate your input.
So I, I've made the motion to direct staff to generate the required documents for getting a bid for the demolition, rough grading and turf cover. So, I, I've made the motion to direct staff to generate the, uh, required documents for getting a bid for the demolition, rough grading and turf cover of the existing Lashin Center with a, an eye towards salvaging as much of the existing, uh, green materials as possible. Trees, bushes, et cetera.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
And walls, like, out, out front in an elevator.
Sell it.
Probably could.
I'm not kidding.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bet you could, yeah.
You could sell it in an elevator for twenty grand, I bet.
There's some big money you get out of it.
And the glass windows.
Yeah. So, you made a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I agree, second.
Were you seconding it? Okay.
And what, are we going to try to establish like three fifty? Do we want to even use a number?
Nathan was helpful. He looked up what the budget, uh, dollar amount is for the demo. It's three hundred thousand.
Okay, do you want to put that in here?
Well, it, it's already in the budget.
Do you want to put it in this motion?
No, we're looking for a request on it.
Yeah, we're just looking for bids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, Mike?
Well, yeah, that's correct. I mean, we, we, you're directing us to put together the documentations, to go out to bid, to get the numbers, to get responses to tear down the building. Then we'd come back to the board with real numbers for your consideration. Hopefully, we don't have to get to three hundred thousand, but, you know.
Tear down, rough grade, turf cover, salvage as much of the existing plant materials as possible.
Understood.
And the square foot of, of that building is obviously smaller than this. What is it, about fifteen thousand? Because you get, I mean, the downstairs is a basement, you know, for all practical purposes, right?
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, I would, I'm, I'd be guessing a little.
Because this is about twenty-five thousand. Anybody agree with me on that?
I agree.
Was anybody here when we built this?
Yeah.
No, it's about, it's twenty-four thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, all right, there's a motion, it's second. Who's the second?
Mr. Dr. Oppenheim.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, I put the agenda, we got anything else left? No, other than adjourned.
Well, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn in a second, and we're going into closed session to discuss personnel and what else?
That's it.
And personnel. Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night. Yeah.